I'm unmuted. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for the Monday, October 20th, 2025 Barrington Select Board meeting. I am calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Beginning with a roll call attendance, and I'll ask that our online board member unmute himself and let us know that you're present. Mr. Sikosha, if you could unmute yourself, let us know that you're present. Okay, I'm going to move on to in-person. Please, roll call.
Simakho present. Happy yellow present?
Hardikoff present. Mr. Sikosha, are you present virtually yet?
The night I called in from planning board, they couldn't.
It was a delay?
It was on the planning.
Okay, we'll give him a moment. While we're waiting for, I'm waiting for a select board member. Okay. Mr. Sikosha, you present?
Hello?
Oh, very good. Could I get a roll call for you, please? Sikosha present? How about a thumbs up that you're present? I'll take a raised hand that you're present.
We know you're there.
You could mouse, yeah, can you mouse over your screen and click on the raise your hand icon for me?
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can. Okay. If you could say Sikosha present, I'd appreciate it. I don't think we're getting him. Can you hear us, Jim?
He's texting me right now. Let's see what he says.
I'm gonna pretend we didn't hear that.
Okay, yeah, he can't hear us.
Okay, what, we're gonna, what do you want to do?
Well, we can continue. We have a quorum, and if he can work through the connectivity issues, he can join us when he's available.
Can someone send him a quick message via text to log off, go back into the link?
I heard it. Sikosha present.
Oh, Sikosha present. Those who choose to, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, he's gonna try to log in from his phone.
Okay, very good. First up is your agenda review and approval with the addition of?
Three poll petitions from Eversource for the placement of new utility polls in the road right away.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of G?
I will make that motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Very good. Roll call, please, to approve items A through G on the consent agenda.
Simakho, aye. Happy yellow, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Mr. Sikosha, can you hear us? Hardikoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you all. Up first is public comment. For anyone who'd like to join us for public comment, we ask that you keep your discussion to three minutes with a total of 15 minutes available to the public. Should you wish to speak, you can mouse over your screen and click on the hand icon if you're online, and we will recognize you. Seeing as that has not occurred, I will turn it over to the in-person meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing as no one in person has indicated they would like to speak during public comment, I will instead close public comment at this time. Open up the public hearing. Do we have a school board liaison present?
I don't see one online.
Okay. I will next open up the public hearing in reference to the emergency lane at Meeting House Road. Would you like to speak to that, T. A. MacGyver?
That'd be great. So, as you know, Meeting House Road is a class six road in Barrington, connects Oak Hill with Smoke Street. A number of years ago, the select board authorized improvements to this class six road in connection with a planning board approved development project, and that development project, the homes have been built, the road has not yet been finished, and so the town is taking appropriate steps to see that that road is finished in accordance with the approved plan. In the meantime, we understand that the developer does not intend to provide winter maintenance services on the road this winter, and I'm proposing to the select board that the select board designate Meeting House Road an emergency lane, which allows the town, but does not require the town, to provide winter maintenance and other services in accordance with law. As you know, the town can't spend public money on a private purpose. This emergency lane provision of statute would allow the town to do this. The proposal to the select board is to provide those services for this upcoming winter or until a resolution is reached regarding Meeting House Road, and so certainly the select board could take future actions. As a class six road, the designation of an emergency lane is just following a meeting and public hearing at a select board meeting. Happy to answer any questions if you have any. It is a public hearing, so we'll open public comment before we make any decisions.
Would anyone like to speak for or against this idea? If you would like to speak, you can mouse over your screen, click on the hand icon, and you will be recognized. Seeing as I do not see anyone online, is there anyone in house who would like to speak for or against this potential decision?
There is support of me. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything.
Okay, very good. Board members' questions? I'm sorry, so I will close public comment at this time. A board members' question, comments, concerns in reference to this?
I just wanted to confirm that with the town administrator that nothing has changed since we discussed previously that the town would not have any liability for any damage to this less than stellar constructed road in doing the winter maintenance?
It's an excellent question, and no. So, and spelled out in the justification for declaring an emergency lane makes clear that the town doesn't expect, accept any additional responsibility or liability for the maintenance activities.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Select board, Sikosha has a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair Sikosha. Go ahead.
Where did we fall off on the communications with the developer on this? Because we were all supposed to meet out there, make sure things were good. Nothing has happened, to my knowledge, that has, you know, everybody, same roof, same hood, go there, look at it, okay, this needs to happen, so, you know, we really need to be.
Yeah, not to interrupt you, Vice Chair, but at the last meeting, T. A. MacGyver provided an update. Go ahead.
Yeah, so that was the plan going into spring of this year. That request was declined by the developer, and we continue to pursue opportunities to see that the road is fixed and finished. So this is something that we're considering doing in the meantime to make sure that while we pursue those opportunities to get the road fixed and finished, that the residents of Meeting House Road can count on properly maintained roads.
Any other questions, Vice Chair Sikosha?
Yeah, is there gonna be, like, you know, because we have to foot the bill for it. In other words, is that gonna come to head eventually, and they'll have to pay for what we put in for hours over there?
That is something that we will keep track of, and the town, there are options for the town to be able to recover the investments that we make.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we declare Meeting House Road a class six road, an emergency lane pursuant to RSA 21359 as presented, to expire on April 30th, 2026.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call vote, I'll begin with you, Vice Chair Sikosha, online.
Sikosha, aye.
Simakho, aye. Happy yellow, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, in reference to your consent agenda, which has now become letters A through G, would anyone like to make a motion in reference to the consent agenda?
I would make a motion to approve the October 20th, 2025 consent agenda, A through G, as presented.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Sikosha, I'm gonna start with you on a roll call vote, please.
Sikosha, aye.
Simakho, aye. Happy yellow, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you. I don't think we have any appointments tonight, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay, on to staff report by our town administrator, Mr. MacGyver. Please proceed.
We're here, a second meeting in October, so I'll skip work anniversaries and move into 2026 initial budget presentation. As a reminder, the select board, last year during the 2025 budget development process, changed the budget process to focus most of the energy and effort in presentations to the advisory budget committee with regular check-ins with the select board. As we did last year, I'll start the budget process with a presentation to the select board, and we'll update you through the process, but department by department presentations and discussions will happen at the advisory budget committee level. Those meetings are open to the public, available for virtual participation, and they're recorded for anybody to refer back to. And I gave this full presentation in more detail than we'll cover tonight to the kickoff advisory budget committee meeting on October 15th, and again, that meeting was recorded and available for virtual participation. A couple points of note before I start on the presentation. The entire budget binder, as has been done for the last five years, is available electronically at barrington.nh.gov/2026budget. So every document is separately linked in table of contents at the top of the page, and so honestly, as helpful as it is to have the physical budget binder, when I'm looking for something that's in the binder, I go to the webpage and look it up there. It's searchable, the documents are electronic, and so that resource is available not only to the budget committee and the select board, but to the community as a whole, and certainly anybody with interest in the municipal operating budget, I would encourage them to refer to that resource. I'll also point out that the minutes to the October 15th advisory budget committee meeting are in your packet. They're three-hole punched, so you can add those to your budget binder in the appropriate chapter if you're interested. So now I will do an abbreviated version of the initial budget presentation so the select board's aware of where we are at a starting point, and we'll update you through the process. You'll see on the slides, as I go through, you'll find links to the specific chapter of the budget binder relative to that part of the discussion. One slide summary here, I'm gonna start with a brief discussion about the strategic plan, talk about Barrington's strong financial stability, a look at the 2026 budget, which is just under $10.5 million, up about $500,000 or 5.5% from the current 2025 approved operating budget. Increases are paving, the other half of the new patrol officer, which was added in July of 2025, inflation in staffing. Fortunately, revenue is stable, and there's $988,000 in initial warrant articles, separate warrant article requests. So the work done by staff, the budget committee, and the select board, all the boards, committees, and commissions, is really driven by the select board's mission, vision, values, and the 2025 to 2030 strategic plan. I won't read through this now. As you know, we keep this posted on the wall. This is what guides the work that we do, and all department heads, as they're preparing their budget proposal, I've encouraged them to make sure that they're focusing on the work that they're doing and the consistency with the guidance provided by the select board. And so this isn't just words on a wall or words on a webpage. This is what guides the work that we do. As the select board knows, we review and visit the mission, vision, and values every year to make sure that remains consistent with the direction the select board has set for the town. So it's our mission, values, vision, and the strategic planning process is a great source of pride for me. I know it is for the select board, too. This, we have gone on a multi-year process of really enhancing the forward-looking approach the select board is taking to operations and policies decisions in the town. And so this year, we finally organized the strategic planning that we're doing into a five-year strategic plan document. There are four key focus areas of that strategic plan: organizational excellence, preservation of rural character, planned investment, and community engagement. I'll point out for those interested, those icons at the four key focus areas tie into every town administrator report, and the topics on the town administrator report have those icons with a goal number, which tie back to the strategic plan set by the select board. So in those four key focus areas, there's identified goals. Came up at the advisory budget committee meeting that, you know, some of these goal statements are pretty lofty, and there's really no specific direction or action behind that. I'll point out that this strategic plan isn't just a set of goals. If you look at the full 11-page document for the strategic plan, there are multiple action items under each goal to drive the work that's performed by staff and guided by the select board to accomplish these goals. Soon, we will be undertaking an update to the select board on progress in the strategic plan. Organizational excellence, there's three goals there. I'll point out that part of efficient service delivery is our focus on our budget process, making sure that the dollars that we spend are contributing to organizational excellence. Preservation of rural character, another important one, planned investment, which relates to our budget development process, and especially our separate warrant articles and capital reserve contributions, and community engagement, which is part of our efforts to make all of our meetings open to the public and recorded and available for virtual participation. So again, this is really driving what we're doing and what this budget means. Population demographics in Barrington. Quick update, the 12-month, the most recent 12-month consumer price index shows a 2.9% consumer price index reflecting about a 3% level of inflation over the last year. Current population estimate is 9,629, which is up 300 from the 2020 census and about 75 from 2023. This is a 15-year average. We've added about 75 residents a year, so pretty consistent there. Just under $100,000 median household income with just under 7% poverty rate and a 90.4% homeownership rate. So we talk about financial stability, which is a core goal of the select board. Unfortunately, you're hearing a lot in the news right now about communities like Claremont and Concord that are facing financial hardships, not all born by mismanagement. You know, the organizations, public organizations in the state that are insured by school care received very large bills, over $30 million total. The Barrington School District received an unanticipated bill of $421,000, and so this is putting a lot of financial hardship on public organizations across the state. Very proud to share that Barrington as a local government is in very strong financial footing, and its work, not only done by this board, but over boards over multiple years, to make sure that we stay in a strong financial position, that we can adapt to changing circumstances, changes in revenue, and things like that. I include this pie chart every year for the main purpose to point out that less than 50% of what it takes to fund our operating budget comes from property taxes. So, you know, it's not easy for a government entity to diversify its portfolio or its revenue streams, right? But we do a really good job in Barrington at making sure that we're not putting everything that we do as a local government on the backs of property taxpayers, and that's one of the reasons that the portion of total taxes paid in Barrington that comes to the municipality is in the sixth percentile statewide. That's not an accident. That's policy decisions over many years. So after property taxes, the next largest portion of revenue comes from vehicle registrations. State aid comes in 12%. That's rooms and meals tax and highway block grant. Fees for service, things like the building department and transfer station, 7%, and miscellaneous revenue sources, 6%. Looking at our tax rate history, a stable tax rate is a good indicator of the strong financial stability of a town. As you can see, I've included the assessment years where the values have changed. When your values change, your rate should drop by a corresponding or similar amount. Any difference is the new taxes that have been raised based on what has been approved by voters, and so this is a line chart of that history. So as property values have risen in Barrington, the rate has consistently dropped. But for folks that pay their taxes, they're not, it's ambiguous to talk about values or the tax rate, because what really matters is the dollar that they pay, dollars that they pay in taxes, which we'll touch on in a second. This is, as I was talking about the percentile, how small Barrington's municipal tax rate is. Overall, the, even corrected for a population where Barrington is the 87th percentile. Only 13% of towns and cities in the state have a higher population than Barrington, but we have the sixth percentile for municipal tax rate per capita. 83rd percentile for valuation, just under $2 billion, but 10th percentile corrected for total value. Same thing, land area directly relates to how many miles of roads we have to maintain, 80th percentile, but 8th percentile for our municipal tax rate. So it, what we do in terms of providing local government service is done in a very efficient way compared to our peers across the state. So this bar chart shows that in the, over the years from 2013 to 2023, the actual dollars in taxes paid by the average homeowner in Barrington went down $30. You can see on the far right that the total paid in taxes increased by a fair amount, but the town's portion, through strong financial management, tight budgets, and pursuing revenue opportunities other than property taxes, made sure that the taxes paid by the average homeowner went down. Inflation over that same 10-year time period is 30%. So it's important, as we look at increases, like the library bond that was approved, increase the amount of taxes people have to pay will be reflected in the rate that people are billed in December, their second issuance bill. And those increases are modest compared to the increases we've experienced over the last 10 years, but when you average the increases out that the town has experienced for the municipal portion of the tax rate, the town has provided a very stable source of funding from property taxes for residents. Also, unassigned fund balance is an important measure of financial stability, so we target the midpoint of the recommended range, so we target maintaining about 12.5% of our unassigned fund balance. We hold about 13.5% right now, just under $5 million. This is a look at the historical utilization, historic utilization of unassigned fund balance. So this is a really interesting dynamic. The work that we have done to tighten our budget, budget very specifically to our anticipated expenditures, and also budget our revenue as close as possible to actuals, means that we are leaving a lot less money on the table at the end of the year. We're just budgeting for what we need, and we're not seeing revenue far in excess of our projections. So those years where we contributed $1.3 million or $700,000 or $500,000, $700,000 to unassigned fund balance are over. We added $170,000 between 2024 and 2025, and that is likely to be experienced in the future as we've tightened our budget and focused on revenue. So that's a good thing from a financial management standpoint, because we are budgeting appropriately and we're appropriately anticipating revenues. One of the things that means for general operations in Barrington is we don't have the surplus unassigned fund balance to appropriate a town meeting that we've had historically. So looking back to 2016, that green bar represents the amount, dollar amount with the scale on the left, that town meeting has appropriated to typically capital reserve contributions over the years. And so we're at a point now where in, for the 2026 town meeting, it's unlikely that we'll recommend appropriating any dollars from unassigned fund balance and just retaining the midpoint of the range at 12.5%. And so that's a change of dynamic that, again, is a result of strong financial management, but different than what we're used to in Barrington. There are many more details about unassigned fund balance, including an explanation of what all these numbers mean in the unassigned fund balance chapter of the budget binder. So into the operating budget, so the approved operating budget 2025, just under $10 million. The proposed 2026 operating budget is just under $10.5 million. Again, an increase at the starting point of the process of 5.54%. Difference is $548,000. That $548,000, about 75% of that is made up from wage and benefit impact factors, which isn't a surprise. We're a customer services organization, and the people that it takes to provide those services are what represents the largest portion of our budget. Additional budget impacts represent about 25%. Looking at those wage and benefit budget impact factors, I mentioned the police officer. So in, at town meeting in 2025, residents approved a budget that allowed us to hire an additional police officer, starting in July. So the 2025 budget had half of the budget necessary to fund that position, and we need to fund the full year in 2026. So you see that $60,000 carrying over. Library staffing changes. The library transitioned mid-year this year, one of their part-time positions to a full-time position, benefit eligible, and that has implications for retirement and health insurance. They reduced the hours of other part-time positions and eliminated a part-time position, which saved some costs, but the net impact of that policy decision by the library trustees was about a $17.5 thousand increase in the operating budget. And I think this is an important point to point out now. I expect it to come up later in the conversation. The library trustees have every right and consistent with our MOU to change the status of employees with the budget that they're approved. The select board, for its purpose, is responsible for finalizing and presenting a library budget to residents. And so while the library has the authority to make policy decisions like transitioning a position from full-time to part-time, or part-time to full-time, I should say, it's the select board's decision whether to budget for that in the upcoming year, and so that is reflected in the wage and benefit impact factors. Continuing, this other staffing change category, census updates, it reflects about $100,000 of the increase. That is staff turnover, where maybe one employee took an in lieu of benefit instead of our health insurance, and the employee that replaced that position takes a family plan of health insurance. Or we have an incumbent who is less experienced of an employee, and we hire a replacement following turnover with somebody with more experience, so they pay more. So that reflects about $100,000 in the budget proposal. Cost of living adjustment, proposed right now, of 3% is $116,000. I'll point out that we included merit increase and a cost of living adjustment in the proposal as a placeholder at this point. As you know, we have a total compensation study being finalized by our consultants, and I expect wage changes and any benefit changes that relate to that total compensation study will be reflected in the final budget proposal, but this is a placeholder so that we have, that the budget reflects wage increases that the select board can consider. Benefit cost increases at $38,000. We received some really positive news from our health insurance provider. Our average premium increase is 7%, even though that's higher than the total operating budget increase, given the health insurance landscape and market right now. That's very favorable news, and actually, it's kind of a technicality for Barrington, because we changed in our health insurance's rules, we changed from a large group to a small group, and that means that the experience of our group is now a lot better, because there are more members that the experience is spread among. And so for folks, for organizations that were a small group previously and remained a small group, the premium increases were up to 20%. And so our premiums did not go up as much because of that, I'll call it a technicality, but an important one.
Before you get to the bottom line, is there an error in that $10,755?
Yeah, there's probably an additional two.
Okay.
Apologize about that. So fire EMS staffing changes. We added additional funds to the fire department budget in, starting in April of 2025, for fire EMS transition, and so this is the remaining 25% of what was included in the 2025 operating budget. Additional budget impact factors, so there's $50,000 in additional paving dollars proposed in the operating budget, and this isn't necessarily to do more paving, because every year, what a cost to pave the same mile, the cost increases, and we need to increase our budget to make sure that we can keep up with our pavement management plan. Revaluation contracts, so we are currently operating with assessed values. They're about 20% below market value based on sales data, and so, as you know, the Department of Revenue Administration requires a plus or minus 10% for what's called your equalized ratio, and so we are preparing to do a revaluation in 2026. There'll be more discussion about that as it gets closer, but we need to budget the funds to be able to afford us that opportunity. Library building maintenance, so this is an increase of $22,000, but I'll point out that $12,000 of that is really just a shift from another line, we'll see in a second, but this is utilities and electrical costs for the new library for a full year. And the printed copy of the total presentation is, or the electronic copy's online, printed copies in the budget binder. Election part-time wages, this is a really, you know, strange dynamic in how we budget. We budget one year at a time. Odd years, we have one election, even years we have three to five elections, and so in 2026, we have three elections, and we need increased funding to pay for what it takes to operate those elections. General government buildings contracts went up $10,000 to reflect the building maintenance contract needs of our various facilities. We need to keep good care of the facilities our residents have invested in. General government buildings, electric, so as you know, because you all pay electric bills, likely, Eversource increased their cost for delivery, which, again, has nothing to do with the generation of electricity, but the delivery charges have gone up substantially. have gone up substantially. And recently, Barrington entered a 28-month supply contract at just over 10 cents per kilowatt hour, which will help stabilize the rate that we pay and have to budget for. But the increase in delivery have necessitated an increase in the operating budget for electricity. Budget decreases, highway building maintenance. We have fewer building maintenance needs in 2026 than we did in 2025. Library contracts, again, these dollars just shifted to another budget line. You saw both sides of that. General Government Buildings Equipment, we needed to buy a mower last year. We don't need to buy a mower this year. And library bond interest, we're on a fixed principal bond repayment, so the principal amount will be equal throughout the entire term of the bond, but the interest will decline each year. So this year went down about $10,000. Revenue impacts. I told you revenue was stable. That doesn't mean every revenue source is stable, just that the total revenue projections are stable. Motor vehicle registration revenue, we expect to increase about $100,000 or 4%. That's a pretty stable trend that we've been experiencing. Interest on investments, we expect to decline. We budgeted less this year than we needed to, so we corrected that in September, when we have an opportunity to update our revenue projections. But we expect rates to continue to drop as advertised in the news and by the Fed. And so that obviously directly reflects in our interest on investments. And so we're budgeting for about 12% reduction in interest on investments in 2026. But again, our total bottom line on revenue, which all of the details are in the Budget Binder, are pretty stable. So we'll look at that again after the end of the year, once we have final numbers for 2025. But we hope to be able to retain a pretty level revenue projections for 2026. Separate financial warrant articles. So as I said, there's just under $1 million in separate financial warrant articles proposed at this stage in the process. A lot of the expected capital reserve contributions, highway heavy equipment, paving, fire truck facilities, emergency communications. Two that I'll point out, one dam repair engineering replacement. So that $190,000, as you remember, is used to fund the town's 35% of the Richardson Pond Dam project. So I don't expect that that warrant article request will be changed at all through the process, because that's the agreement that the Select Board and Conservation Commission came to at the September 23 meeting. I'll also point out police collective bargaining agreements. So the operating budget as proposed right now does not include any increase for police officers that participate in the union or covered under the union. That's because their contract is up and will be negotiated and will be a separate warrant article. The cost items will be a separate warrant article at town meeting in March. And so for the purposes of making sure we had a placeholder and we think about the total financial impact, I included a placeholder. That $30,000 reflects what the same step and cost of living increase that's currently a placeholder in the budget for all non-union employees. That's about the value for union employees in the police department. So that number is subject to change based on negotiations with the police union. And the rest of the capital reserve contributions remain pretty consistent with years past. That's the overview. Again, Budget Binder webpage, contact information for any questions. Any questions from the Select Board?
Excellent.
Okay, terrific. So as I said, we'll continue to keep you updated. Copies of the Budget Committee minutes at every meeting, and certainly don't hesitate to let us know if you have any questions. Moving on.
Moving on. Municipal.
I have two more things.
Yep.
In the staff report.
Mm-hmm.
Madberry Lee Barrington Fire Collaboration Working Group update. I included the set of the most recent minutes in your packet, and we're gearing up for that Monday, November 10 joint meeting, which is in Lee at 6:00 PM at the Public Safety Building.
Date again?
November 10, Monday.
Got it.
The Capital Improvement Program Review and Adoption Joint Planning Board Meeting. So remember, last year, we held a joint meeting with the Planning Board to adopt the Capital Improvement Program, and we'd like to propose doing that in 2025 as well. The consideration right now is targeting the November 17 Select Board Meeting. We could start with a joint meeting with the Planning Board and move into Select Board business after that, if the Select Board is open to it.
I think that's an appropriate timeframe.
I agree, especially considering what we know is coming down to be discussed at that meeting.
Vice Chair Sakosha, you okay with that?
I am.
Okay. I don't think we need to vote on that. We just need to, okay.
I'll keep you posted. The Planning Board will be reviewing the initial CIP discussion tomorrow night. And so we'll we'll follow up. I'll follow up with the planner and see if that's still a good target, the November 17 meeting. I will also plan to have two things if we're able to do this joint meeting. One, a presentation from the fire and police chiefs about what they have in mind for the space needs and facility needs for those two departments. I think it'd be good to have the Planning Board in the audience for that discussion as well. And also, later on, we're going to talk about a, we talked previously, I should say, about the warrant article to have the Select Board appoint a CIP committee. And I think it would be fruitful to have a conversation with the Planning Board. I know the planner will talk to the Planning Board about it in the course of business, but talking about that collectively, I think, may provide some insights in the general support for that idea. So we'll do that all on the 17th if possible. And then the only last item is the annual conference for the New Hampshire Municipal Association on 19th and 20th.
Who's attending? I know you're going both days.
I'm going on Wednesday.
Okay. All right. And I, what's the dates again?
19th and 20th, Wednesday, Thursday.
I can do the 20th.
Would you be able to attend the ZVA thing on the 19th?
I'm away for business.
Both dates you're away, Vice Chair?
Yep. Long stretch on that one, about a week.
And you you need someone to run the meeting on the 19th?
If we can have a fully seated board, that would be great. If not.
Okay, so I was gonna say, so Paul Tibbetts would run the meeting, because he's the Vice Chair, and he would have to appoint me. Okay, yes, I certainly can. Let me put it in my You got it. Not a problem. So the 20th, I'll look at what's on the calendar for training sessions and certainly can consider. It'll have at least two-fold. Yeah. Okay, very good.
If you need help registering, contact Tiffany.
We'll do that.
All right.
I did that.
Okay. Next up before you, since Municipal Office Administrator Cottle is absent, I've sent signatures down that she expects us to sign.
There's a few that both of you missed, so I figure we'll finalize this.
Oh, very good to know. Listen, we try our best. But Tiffany, I was gonna say, you know, and but Tiffany, you know, she points us in the right direction all the time. Old business exemption and credit changes. Before we begin on this, I reviewed the material, but I also did some data analysis on two areas that concerned me. One of them was the elderly exemption for single and the disability exemption for single as well. Apparently, as it turns out, it costs almost one and a half times any expense to live as a single person versus a married person. Go figure. And I'm wondering if the board would be open to moving the elderly exemption income limits to $37,500, and the disabled exemption income limits to $37,500.
And this would be a warrant article to voters in March of 2026.
Okay, let me make sure I'm looking at where you're talking about.
So on the page three of four, 1, 2, 3, the fourth box down, elderly exemption income limits, they're currently 36 and 50. 37.5 is more in keeping with what we could expect a single person in that category to be experiencing for actual need. One and a half times the midpoint of married is about what they expend between expenses for daily living, and then the disabled exemption income limits, the single line, 37.5. And that's on page four at the very top.
You're saying one and a half times. Do you mean 75% of what a married couple pays, a single person pays?
Yeah.
Okay.
So for the elder exemption, the single would go from 36 to 37.5?
To 37.5, and then the disabled exemption single would go to 37.5.
From 30.
Yeah, I wonder if it got overlooked, though. They cannot use both, correct?
Correct. It's one or the other.
It seems appropriate to me.
I agree. I have actually been approached by residents of the town about about similar issues, so I would have no issue raising that as proposed.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm just curious about elderly exemption started at 36.
So.
The disabled was at 30.
Yeah, so that's kind of one of the things I'm pointing out. We made two changes that I know of to the elderly exemption over my tenure with this board. So I think that one got paid attention to a little more closely than the other one. And I'm just thinking, you know, potentially having the two income limits match for single people seems to make more appropriate sense.
And it is interesting, you know, I don't know the history, but it's interesting to me to see, you know, if you compare single elderly, where the county average is $38,000 for an income limit, state average is $29,000. Whereas for disabled exemption, the income limits for the county for a single is $16,000, and the state average is $13,000. So it seems consistent with the county and state averages that the that Barrington at $30,000 actually doubled. Whereas if you look at the where we are with the single elderly, we're just below the county average and about $7,000 above the state average. So I don't know why that came to be. Just interesting data for consideration if we're looking at warrant
So that probably is why that's lower. Yeah, the state max is actually very similar. Interesting.
Yeah, it's quite bizarre. So those are my two recommendations.
And it always comes up when we talk about changing, moving the levers on these, or proposing to move the levers, what the impact will be to to taxes. When it, as it relates to income limits, there's no credible way for us to calculate how many people are just barely not eligible for income limits. And so it's one of those things that we really don't know until we move that lever and see who comes in that makes $37,000 versus 36 and is may be eligible now. So I just want to get that out there on the on the front end of this. That won't be an easy thing to calculate. So the Select Board doesn't have to make any decisions tonight. We have time. If you, if the Select Board feels that they want to support the proposed increases made by the Chair, we can certainly vote on that now. If you want to vote on that and still consider other potential changes, we have time to do that. Just let me know if there's additional information you want, or if you're ready to make a decision and move on and just bring to deliberative session a proposal to make changes or not.
I think I would like a little more information. Connor, if you can find out why the county average and the state average has been so low for single disabled exemption income
I can research that.
I think the one other thing we should ask is, we've got the asset limits for elderly exemption at 125. Is it potentially lower because the exemption asset limits are only $75,000 for disabled? It seems unusual to me that there's such a vast difference in those as well.
And again, that seems consistent with the county and state averages. You know, this this county average for asset limits, 53, and the state average is 41, whereas our level is 75. Which is obviously on the generous side of assets. I'll point out that assets for the purpose of exemptions do not include the primary residence.
So as I'm understanding what you're saying, someone could have $500,000 in equity in their home, and it is not considered towards the asset?
Correct. Madam Chair, you had said you would also be interested in seeing additional information, but I didn't get the question.
The the difference in the disabled exemption asset limits and the elderly exemption asset limits are $50,000 difference. One is 125.
I see that.
One is 75. Not not a large difference in what we allow for exemption income limits. Why would we, I'm just curious why we wouldn't match them. State max is 500,000. State max is 750 on elderly. Interesting.
I don't know that I'll be able to confidently answer that historically question. I think what the Select Board has done in the past is make adjustments or propose adjustments to the income and asset and credit levels consistent with the county and the state, making sure that we provide for our residents consistent with the averages in the county and the state. And so in in some areas, the town of Barrington has been much more generous than the county and the state historically. And over the years, that gap has closed some. But I was proud to see that in many areas, especially in our veteran credit areas, we are very generous compared to the county and the state averages.
Exceptionally, yes.
And I think that should be a source of pride for our residents who have supported the support we provide, not only to our veterans, but to our elderly.
It is. I will point out, as a veteran family, though, that we, when we enacted that, there were 32 households, and we are, we've had a 75% increase in people that have moved to our town or have experienced service-related total disability, which is a really large increase from the time that that was enacted, really large increase. I can't think of what else we would go to to study why there is such a vast difference between elderly versus disabled. I wonder if there's a nonprofit group. I will, I will do some digging. It's interesting. Those are my recommendations, though. I suppose at this point, we should just table those recommendations until we gather more information on those two areas. So for the sake of time, I would table my suggestion and carry it forward to another meeting.
Any other board members have proposals for any changes to exemptions or credits? I will point out, as I did in the Town Administrator Report, a change in law, HB99, which takes, which has taken effect and will impact folks in 2026. This does two things. First, it changes the maximum available credit communities can adopt for the service-connected total disability from 4,000 to 5,000. Barrington's is currently 4,000. The state average is 2,385, and the, or the county average, excuse me, is 2,385, and the state average is 1,897. The second thing that it does is it eliminates the opportunity for a service-connected total disability veteran credit recipient from receiving the all-veteran, optional veteran, or standard veterans' credit, which they had been able to receive previously. So for those 50.
56. I'd like to interject on that, though. When we began incremental changes to that permanently totally disabled service-connected disability credit, it was to get to a maximum of 4,000. You had changes within the Select Board, and it continued moving upward without hitting that plateau that it was intentionally supposed to hit with incremental changes. So I think, based on that, it's appropriate to recognize that as a community, we're providing 16, $1,615 more in a. $1,615 more in an actual, not in an exemption, but in an actual tax credit.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure the select board is aware of that change in statute and how the credits will be applied in the upcoming year.
I agree with the chair.
Okay, ready to move on?
Yes. I would make a motion at this time to cancel the November 3 tentative selected select board meeting that was a placeholder.
Second.
I have a roll call, beginning with Vice Chair Sokosha.
Sokosha, aye.
Mako, aye. Epi, aye.
Hardakoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Next up under Old Business is the Christmas Eve Town Hall hours.
Where we left off of this discussion is the select board. This was a request from the town clerk to shift the open hours for the town clerk's office from 1:00 to 6:00, which would be standard on a Wednesday, to 8:00 to 1:00. In recognition of the Christmas Eve anticipated traffic at the town hall, the select board asked what the hours were of the DMV for that Wednesday. DMV is open for that Wednesday. The town clerk mentioned that in years past, the DMV has announced in the week leading up to Christmas that the office would close a couple hours early, may close a couple hours early. She pointed out that there were 17 transactions over the counter on Christmas Eve, and 11 of them were in person, and she noted that all the residents came in before 1:00 p.m. And that is the information the select board requested and looking for a decision.
Remind me when the rest of the offices are closing? At 5:00?
Tax office is open until 6:00. The rest of the town hall has advertised open hours between 4:00 and 5:00.
I had a question, just based on the commentary that you provided when we sought this additional information, where it says, historically, for the past 10 years, the town hall employees have had either Christmas Eve off or the day after Christmas off. Did they not have the day after Christmas off this year?
They do.
They do? Okay.
So the 12 approved holidays in the select board's personnel policy include the day after Thanksgiving and either the day before or day after Christmas.
So I'm going to ask you, I know you don't have oversight of this particular... Your recommendation is that we continue to follow the hours that we have published so that residents within our community are better able to make their decisions and do their planning as well. My guess is that there are a few people who are going to be released from their work potentially and come running here to make their business complete and would find out that they cannot conduct that business for another five days. So two things occur to me. One is, I feel like this is your decision. This town hall is under the oversight of the town administrator, and I don't feel like we should be deviating for one group over the rest of the group. I understand that after 5:00 p.m., with the DMV closed, the potential exists that you maybe could not provide service to someone if you could not get an answer or get into their computers or provide that support. What if we moved the hours from 1:00 to 6:00 to 12:00 to 5:00?
And I've supported that in the past, closing at 5:00 because of the availability of support services and the like. So the proposal would be to close the town hall at 5:00?
Would we have to pay them if we said, hey, you know, we're not going to be open on Christmas Eve?
Yes.
Gotcha.
The town clerk expressed a willingness of affected employees to use earned time for that time away, but the select board as an employer, the town cannot close a facility where somebody has scheduled hours and not provide them compensation.
Yeah, I mean, I personally...
Tracy, you were saying that we moved to earlier instead of later?
Sure. If we move to 12:00 to 5:00, I mean, I think you're both meeting the resident needs and potentially meeting the needs of employees to get to any celebratory dinner or something with extended family on Christmas Eve.
Even 7:00 to 1:00, because, I mean, you know, I think earlier is better, right? I mean, I think...
I don't, though, Jim.
Somebody who's buying a new car is going to skirt in there and being like, I need to register this tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, too. I think residents are more appreciative of having an earlier time on Christmas Eve. Can't imagine there are that many people who...
I think messaging is the problem. We often... So when you're trying to get the message out there that a change has taken place, we've got tax office open, we've got... What else is open?
The entire town hall?
The entire town hall is open.
But it's not just the town hall, right? So we... And we run into this, where there are various parts of our operations which don't mesh nicely with our holiday schedule. Transfer station is a perfect example. There's a subset of, I think, four of the 12 approved holidays that the transfer station is open regardless. So even on approved holidays, the transfer station's open on Martin Luther King Day, or no, that's always going to be on Monday. What's a good example? New Year's Day, I think, is one of them, where the transfer station's always open. So the recreation department, for example, Parks and Recreation, they adjust their holiday schedule to be consistent with the school holiday schedule because they run before and after care. So a lot of times, we have approved holidays on days that they need to provide before and after care services. Library, similarly, has open hours on more holidays than the 12 approved holidays for the town. And so the select board, in authorizing 12 approved holidays, in 2025, the approved holidays are Christmas Day and the day after Christmas. And so the expectation for residents, I believe, is that the town hall is open on the day before Christmas. And that certainly has implications for staff and availability, and we know. We know, based on historic utilization, that the foot traffic at the town hall is very light on Christmas Eve and the day before Thanksgiving. It's not...
Of course.
...but it's very light. And so it was brought up that the specific proposal here for the town clerk's office, town clerk's office is only open from 1:00 to 6:00 on Wednesdays. Other offices in the town hall are open the entire day, regular hours on a Wednesday. And so if the select board is entertaining switching the open hours from 8:00 to 1:00 or 8:00 to noon on the day before Christmas, there would need to be a consideration for the other offices in the town hall. And if we're going to close the entire town hall at 12:00 or 1:00, I think the... I think this select board needs to be consistent. As I said at the last meeting, I think what we do in providing customer service to the community is important, it's important to be consistent. And we have hours, and we have an expected schedule of residents, and I think that we should make every effort to maintain that. There are circumstances when we can't implement weather, you know, or specific trainings that only happen once a year that the whole office has to attend, but wherever possible, I think it's important that we maintain the schedule that we communicate to residents.
I would want everybody to be with their families in the afternoon, or friends, or however they celebrate, and be with them, and get the business done early in the day. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels.
I don't think that we have the ability to convey that type of change on a Wednesday, Vice Chair. And so my concern is this. I picture, you know, the young person that just got their Christmas bonus, and they're rushing over here to register their car, and didn't get that memo posted on Facebook that the hours were changing for this, and can't conduct the business that they've just set their time aside to do. I don't see what the barrier is, given that there are four days off from this point forward, to move it to noon to 5:00 p.m., still allowing the majority of the residents to conduct their business as scheduled.
I'm just one of five.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer to see it in the morning as well. I think it actually would be a service to our residents to have it earlier. Probably could live with 5:00. I won't go to 6:00.
5:00, I mean, just, you know, I run a business, but, you know, I also have family, and, you know, usually there's Christmas Eve activities, and I just want to make sure the people that work, the great people that work for this town, have the ability to be there for their families as well.
I'll make this statement, because I spent so much of my career in human resources. No good deed goes unpunished. If we make this change, then the next time there's a holiday that occurs, we're going to be asked for another change and another change. I feel like if the town hall hours are the town hall hours, we provide to our residents what they expect from us, and I think it's wonderful to have from 5:00 on with family and four days off to celebrate a holiday. I think it's wonderful if we're able to schedule people off and they're traveling to faraway places to celebrate their holidays. I just feel that consistency with how we're handling the town hall hours and employees is important, and we can't deviate for one area of the town hall.
I see this as not only, you know, if you were to go that way, that's fine. I understand that. But, you know, also, if we're flexible, it also is another attribute to working in the town of Barrington and how we're considerate.
Probably ready for a decision, motion or decision?
I think that I would make a motion at this time to approve a change from noon time to 5:00 p.m. with notice throughout all of social media and on the website, that we will, in fact, be closing that one hour early, and that we apply it consistently to the tax office as well. I hear no second. Do I have another motion?
I would like to make a motion to open up the town hall and our town services from 8:00 to 1:00 on Christmas Eve.
Can I just clarify? You're saying for all town services?
Correct.
To be clear, the police department, fire department, if there's snow, the public works department will all be working on Christmas Eve. And so I expect that you're probably referring to the services offered out of the town hall.
Correct, yep.
You would?
Thank you, Chief Joy, for your input in reference to that. So in reference to this, you have employees that are full-time employees that are expected to be at work for eight hours that day. You would be providing them with an additional two hours of paid leave that they are not necessarily entitled to.
We can do 8:00 to 3:00.
It would have to be 8:00 to 3:30, because if any of them happen to be non-exempt employees, you must provide a half an hour lunch break for them to step away from their desk according to both federal and state labor laws.
Excellent.
Is the motion on the table to close the town hall at 3:30 on Christmas Eve?
Correct.
And included in that motion is the understanding that there will be an additional fraction of a holiday for employees that aren't working their full shift, their full-scheduled shift on... Is there a second for that motion?
So I want to be clear about what you just...
Yeah.
So town hall employees generally, full-time town hall employees generally work 10-hour days. Everybody doesn't have the same schedule. The scheduled hours for employees differs. We have part-time employees, they'll have scheduled hours on Wednesday. And so it sounds like the proposal is to close the town hall at 3:30. The motion is to close the town hall at 3:30 on Wednesday, which would mean, for some employees, they won't be working their scheduled hours, their scheduled 10 hours, say, for instance, of the conversation on that Wednesday. And so because we're closing the town hall, they'll be using, we call it admin time, like if we have to close for a weather emergency and folks aren't able to work from home for that fraction of a day, and say it's two and a half hours.
I'd like to revoke my motion and say that...
It's extremely complicated, and it's very unfair to other employees. Go ahead. Vice Chair Sokosha, go ahead.
Make a motion that people, or the people who work for the town, work their full hours for the day, starting at 8:00, and when that ends for them, that ends for them.
Well, not everybody starts at 8:00. Building Department starts at 7:00. The town clerk's office, in this case, starts at 1:00.
Okay. Well, how can we do this so it's fair, and it's not like we're giving away free time? So I would push that back onto you.
The request was just for the clerk's office, because the town clerk sets her office's hours independently.
Well, no, the town, the select board sets the town clerk's office hours, period. The town clerk sets her hours. She's supervised by the residents as an elected position.
So I understand the desire to, you know, make this go further, but I think that has just opened the door to so many complications.
And as it relates to the town clerk's office, the deputy town clerk, as a for instance, even though the office opens at 1:00, from 1:00 to 6:00, the deputy town clerk works a 10-hour day on Wednesday. And so if the open hours of the town clerk's office were shifted from 8:00 to 1:00, that isn't just shifting the hours worked for the staff in the town clerk's office. That would leave a portion of the day unworked, which is where the, again, the town clerk followed up and said that staff will use earned time if they need to, but we can't close an office and force somebody to use earned time.
So I would go back to making a motion to close town hall business at 5:00 p.m. on Christmas Eve.
And in that, having the town clerk and tax office open from noon to 5:00 instead of 1:00 to 6:00.
That is correct.
So the work hours.
I think out of simplicity, it might end up being...
Yeah.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, please, Vice Chair Sokosha?
Sokosha.
Mako, aye. Epi, aye.
Hardakoff, aye. The motion carries. I think that was inappropriate. I really have tremendous respect for our employees. I also have tremendous respect for our residents and their time, so I think I appreciate that. Up next is the MLB Fire Collaboration Working Group Response Time Mapping. Interesting document. They got a great guest last round as well.
Yes.
To you.
Really exciting.
So this is a really important part of the work that the Collaboration Working Group is doing. We need to understand what the implications are of a Barrington station, a Lee station, a Madbury station are. Also, we need to understand, from an EMS response time perspective, what it looks like with McGregor and Barrington operating ambulances and Lee and Madbury not having ambulances at their station. And so we have a couple of proposals. We're going to dive really deep into this at our meeting on Wednesday, but I'd like to ask the select board to authorize up to $5,000 out of the incident fund to fund a portion of response time mapping. I'll also point out that it's possible that Barrington's portion is larger than the portion paid, or if paid at all, by Madbury and Lee. There's two main reasons for that. First, Madbury already funded response time mapping, which included Barrington in the MRI study they had done. And so there's work that we won't need to do because Madbury has already funded some of that work. Similarly, the EMS response time mapping isn't as important or critically important to Lee or Madbury as it is to Barrington. But understanding, for instance, what the implications would be if we, say, formed a district and McGregor still responded to Lee and Madbury, what would it look like to take part of Barrington, like the Route 4 corridor, and automatically assign that to McGregor, and take portions of Madbury, like the Route 9 corridor, and automatically assign that to the ambulance out of Barrington Station, and improve overall response times for the three communities? So we want to understand the implications of options like that. But again, that isn't as operationally important to Lee and Madbury. So like I said, we're going to take a deep dive into how we might split the cost to do the response time mapping, but for Barrington's purpose, I'm asking authorization to spend $5,000 towards it, up to $5,000 towards those activities.
And we'll be looking at MRI to do that, since they've already done that work?
No. MRI subcontracted to CAI Technologies out of Littleton. That's the same company that maintains our online tax maps, and we currently have proposals from both CAI and Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Would anyone like to make a motion to allow up to $5,000 for focus on the time mapping for the... mapping for the collaboration?
So moved.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
And a second. Could I have a roll call vote, beginning with Vice Chair Sokosh, please?
Sokosh, aye.
Demakow, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Next up before you is the board deciding on a select board participant in reference to the police union negotiations that expire at what time and date?
The current contract expires at the end of March 2026. The negotiations will hopefully result in a proposed tentative agreement where the cost items would go to voters in March of 2026 and take effect April 2026 for the term agreed on during negotiations.
What do the meetings look like?
So we've had very efficient negotiations with both the police union and the highway department union. I would expect at least three, couple-hour meetings between now and December. I believe I can tell you the date of the kickoff meeting. That helps influence anybody's decision.
It will.
Yep.
We did this last year.
Most recently, no, Danin did the highway department.
He did the highway.
Rob Gibson did the sidebar agreement, most recent sidebar agreement.
Love Rob. Great guy.
Folks in, our lovely men and women in blue, remind me, I'm not seeing on my calendar. What did, 29th, October 29th at?
Don't have a time yet.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. So October 29th, preferably in the morning, is a proposal for kickoff meeting?
Wednesday mornings would work for me.
We don't have time yet.
I cannot do any afternoons. I am a Gigi and responsible for kindergarten kickoff. Anybody else want to volunteer?
If it's three meetings on a Wednesday, I'm already wrapped up with the fire crew later at night. So if they're in the morning, I could probably make that happen.
So Jim, it sounds like it's going to be you or I. I'm not sure that I have as many committees currently as you have. So I would make myself available for the police union negotiations if the board would like to see that occur.
Whoever.
I would have loved to do it, but I'm traveling to California for my legal specialization exam. I won't even be in town.
Good for you.
Congratulations.
This is in between her flight lessons, by the way, vice chair. She's becoming a pilot as well.
That's awesome.
So I'm not going to make my own motion in reference to that. I will leave it up to this board.
I move that we appoint Tracy Hardikoff as the select board participant to join the town's police union negotiation team and to authorize the deputy police chief to join the police chief on the town's negotiation team as well.
And could I have a roll call vote, beginning with Vice Chair Sokosh?
Sokosh, aye.
Demakow, aye.
And Hardikoff will recuse herself in reference to that, but the motion carries. Thank you all. Anything else on our agenda, sir?
A man.
I would take a motion to adjourn at 7:44. Oh, no, okay.
Reports and concerns and public comments.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Jim, you got a report out for us?
I do. Yep.
Please.
So Fall Fest this Saturday, October 25th at Barrington Elementary. 1:30, vendors, food trucks and games. 2:30, trunk retreat. 3 o'clock, live music. 4:45, a spooky walk with a light fright. And then 6 o'clock, a spooky walk, a night break, a night fright. And to be honest, I'm going to do a little Seamus plugs, Kosha Electric being there. Have some nice cups for everybody. In addition, and this is something that I really enjoyed when I was a kid and went to school in Barrington, but the Gunstock Outreach Program is back. Ages 8 to 18. The anticipated dates are 2:03, 2:10, 3:03, and 3:10. Registration is open up now and it closes November 14th.
And so what is that program all about, Jim?
So from what I know is you used to get on a bus and have your skis, snowboard, and you would go up to Gunstock and you would be able to go up to Gunstock and have a great time with your friends and ski down the trails, learn. It could be anything from learning to riding down the trails by yourself. And then you get on the bus and you're wicked tired when you get home. And yeah, it's really a good time.
And weekends? These are weekend times?
So, well, I'll have to check the dates on-
I think the schools used to do it.
They did. So it would be on Wednes, Tuesdays, it looks like, because 2:03 and 2:10 are on Tuesdays. So-
It must be after school, then?
Yeah, it would be like an after school.
I've got it.
You take off, you go up, have a good time. It's cold. You might, might be able to go in, get some curly french fries and go up, ski the mountain and come down. And Billy Downs used to be a really great instructor up there. I still think he's doing it.
Still, he's got to be there.
Yeah, still think he's doing it. Great veteran, too, by the way.
Any other information for us?
That's all I got from the rec. department. I think you heard a little bit about the collaborative effort with the Joint Firefighter Program. Really great talks, good discussion. I'm excited to see where it's, where it can go. I think there's, you know, it's some, maybe people are afraid to grow in a way or to, you know, kind of step up. But I think generally, the idea of the whole thing is going to be really great. And I look forward to our joint meeting on the 10th.
Excellent. Next report out is, I'm not looking at the order in which they're listed, but would you like to go ahead, Alexandra Smako?
Sure. So the zoning board of administration met last Wednesday to hear a single case on a zero setback to construct a sideless, you know, metal bolt down, just carport. And that was granted relatively quickly and I think was a bit of a learning opportunity for the board. And that was it.
Great. Joyce?
So planning board met two weeks ago. We had a design review for a four-lot subdivision on Route 9. It's 21 acres. There's already a four lot, I mean, a four-unit building on that, and it'd be adding two back lots and a front lot. Most of the discussion for this design review was about driveways because DOT wasn't happy with the original placement of the driveways. That's being looked at. These will be two-bedroom, single-family homes, three of them.
Excellent.
And then the second was a design review with the Lewis Builders for 79 duplexes on the Koot Farm. So that'll be 512 acres. And we were only looking at the yield plan, but they're expecting to do a conservation subdivision with 300 acres of open space. Planning Board did not make a decision on the yield plan, although Lewis Builders wanted that at the meeting because there was concern about some of the upper 25 lots and whether that met the criteria of feasibility, both technically and financially because of all the wetland crossings. So the decision was made to postpone the design review decision and the planning board would have legal control.
Excellent.
About it. And I guess that's it. We'll meet tomorrow.
Thank you. The Conservation Commission opened their meeting. They have a balance of $831,489.93, of which a large portion of that is encumbered by, what's the word I'm looking for?
The-
Commitments. Yeah, they have funding agreements and commitments in reference to those dollars. They brought forward the map for the New Trafford Regional Planning. It's been updated and Conservation Commission is now using that. They discussed a memorial bench being placed on one of the properties that's conserved. Enforcement actions are taking place with some infractions in reference to commercial development off of Pierce Road, as well of someone using a not authorized camping site on some of our, I think, Temposi property off of Bay Emerald Acres.
Fortunately, it's not like a homeless camping site. It's nearby. Residents have built a little camp to belong to. We'll get it rectified.
There you go. And the discussion took place in reference to a proposed petition warrant article in reference to lakes and invasive species and funding cleanup for that. Discussions about septic and discussions about an invasive species workshop, discussions about the CIP. Discussions took place in reference to finding out if we are eligible for a climate impact grant through PREP. And then they discussed cases that are before the planning board and what their environmental and conservation impacts could be. And I always love this portion. Sightings were barred, owls and a coyote. And I'd like to report multiple red foxes somewhere hiding around the Malago Cape Road. And that is all. I would take a motion to adjourn at-
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. Is there anyone online who'd wish to speak? Please mouse over your screen and click on your hand icon and you will be recognized. Seeing as none, I'll turn it over in-house. Is there anyone here who'd like to be recognized for public comment? Seeing as the room contains zero humans besides the select board and TA, I will close public comment. And I would take a motion to adjourn at-
Do we need any non-public?
7:52.
Okay. I hope that we adjourn.
And I would second that. Roll call, beginning with Vice Chair Sokosh, online, please.
Sokosh, aye.
Demakow, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Have a wonderful night, all.
You, too.